The additions or deletions that anybody else? On the first time, can I have a motion to accept the agenda as is? Thank you. All in favor? That is carried. First order business 3.1, the minutes of the June 28th, 3:00 meeting, and the minutes of the July 12th, 22nd council meeting. Are there any error or omissions, any direct to? Nothing? Can I get a motion to adopt the minutes from those two dates?
I'll move to adopt the minutes from June 28th until I talk minutes.
Tracy, thank you. All in favor? That is carried. 3.2 Conex Wireless Delegation. Say it again, you want to speak for that?
For sure. Conex is going to phone in. They want to provide, they've been here before, or spoken to the administration before, not us, but administration. They want to provide an update on technology that handles a wider range of bulk water payments system. So that when we're ready in the future, or when we're ready budget-wise, this is what we're here to manage. They've developed a suite of bulk water payment designs, and they want to provide information to council regarding this system. Council has their package, but the representatives wanted to talk a little bit about it tonight. And we've taken a look at it. We've applied a fair amount of municipalities on this. And it's quite interesting for council considerations.
Data collection system, is that what we're looking at?
Are you looking at the cash system and the monitoring controls?
Oh, yes.
I don't know why her number's not working.
Is that anyone for sure?
Yeah, I tried with one, I tried not one. Just confirm it before the meeting.
Yes, okay, if we can move forward. To me, I wish to preference to wait a few minutes to move forward with.
It won't have knocked it out on the line. 3.3 Maria Vaya and David Laplace Residential Tax Incentive Delegation, and that'll be a phone call as well.
Yeah, phone call, just cut the paper every time. Do you need to provide this with a paper on Joe? I can dial you. This is a tax incentive for residential. One more time that we go over here.
Welcome. Thank you for calling Techs2Car and Conex Wireless. Our office is now closed. If you wish to leave a message, please press 1 for sales, 2 for technical support, or 3 for Kim.
Wireless Kim speaking.
Hi, Kim. It's Donna Tona from the Town of Thorbsby, CEO. How are you?
Hi Donna, I'm good. How are you?
Excellent, Kim. Kim, you're live in front of council. I'll turn it over to Mayor Houston, and you can begin your presentation at his request.
Hi, Kim. It's Derek. How are you today?
I'm good. How are you? Nice to have you.
Yeah, so we're looking at your paperwork that we have here. So if you can maybe enlighten us and give us some highlights on it, I guess, then we'll go from there.
Yes, that sounds really good. Could I just, I hate to interrupt this right at the beginning, but I'm going to give you a new number to phone because it's just breaking up really bad.
Okay.
All right, Kim, I'm taking notes. Go ahead.
Okay.
Uh, one more time, 83? 7279. Good first. We'll call you back in a sec.
Thank you so much. Okay, let's see if that's, hopefully that's better.
Oh, that's.
Can you hear me guys? Okay?
We're doing fine.
Yes, that's much better. Okay, so yes, I would love to enlighten you guys. You guys have the, well, first off, so Conex Wireless. You guys would maybe potentially be familiar with a few of these. We have a, an interactive testimonial map that I'll definitely send Donna after if I haven't already. But in Alberta, we're kind of just dipping our toes in. We do have 70% of the RMs as our clients in Saskatchewan. And so because we're here, we really got into that heavy first. And then we also have 30% of the municipalities in Manitoba as well. But Alberta that are using our water fill, just to list off a few that you might know, county and the village of Warner, Woodlands County, Town of Milk River, Town of Provost, Village of Marwayne. So it's not just RMs. We do do a lot of business at the villages and the towns like yourself as well. So right now, you guys have your coin op, and just for brief discussion with Donna, you're pulling about $15,000 a year in revenue. And so that also means you're rolling, you're emptying, you're counting, you're rolling about $1,500 a month. And most places don't enjoy that. I don't know about you guys. So as far as problems go with your guys' coin op, it has been broken in before, Donna tells me, and that you guys were interested in taking a look at a new system. Are there any other problems associated that you guys have experienced?
Well, Cory, go ahead. I'll do that. The biggest problem with our bulk fill is, I think everyone acknowledges that we need a better system for collecting the money, but we need a better system for the bulk fill station as far as fill rates and location and all the rest. So I don't see anything worthy of upgrading at our current bulk fill. We need a new bulk fill. This would probably have to go part and parcel with that larger conversation at a later time, but this could be integrated into that later discussion, I guess is my thought.
So you, so you guys are in, in the process of building another station, is what you're saying?
No, we're in the process of acknowledging the limitations of our current system.
Correct. We, we applied for some funding here for feasibility on another water thing. And in conjunction with that, we were looking at a new bulk station. We, I don't think the one Cory is, I don't think the one we have is worthy of doing anything with it. Unfortunately, you fill it up with loonies, it's the, it's very, a small line. The line isn't connected to a camlock or anything like that. So the people come in there in the middle of the winter, they sit on top of their tanks, and they have to bring their own hose in there, and it's just not a good situation.
Right, exactly.
So, so what, what you're offering is exactly what we want, but we want it on a better system, not the one that we have presently ourselves.
I see. Okay, well, I don't need to go over the problems that you guys are having anymore than we already have then. Yeah, it's pretty clear that you guys know why you need a little bit of an upgrade. So I'll just tell you about the system that we would offer you. So you could do prepay, which is what we always recommend, so there's no invoicing. Prepay system, you could do postpay if you wanted, flat fee, no pay. You can set it up however you want. But you would know who came to get water, when they came, and how much they took, how much it cost. You would also have the ability to, since it's all wireless, disable fobs for non-payments in a postpay system. You can set different rates for different users. So commercial entities or rate payers could be paying different rates for the water, which is always nice. A lot of places, obviously, the fire station gets their water for free, but their fobs, they just go up. And it really is as simple as this. You take your fob, you hold it up to the module, and it beep. And then a couple seconds later, it will double beep to let you know the water's running. You let that water run as long as you need it, and then you put the fob up and it stops. It's really as simple as that. It also has an auto shut-off. So in the wintertime, if someone, and we've heard that this happens, which is crazy, but people actually leave the pump on. So they called us, said, "Yes, this is a problem," so we put an auto shut-off on there too. It's defaulted at 15 minutes, and then some places have it left, but you have the ability to change that at any time. So you want five minutes instead because you don't want a skating rink in the field in the winter. So you are able to send messages to users through the system. There's a low balance notification as well for users, so data threshold's $10. Once their account reaches that, they get a notification that says, "Hey, put some more money in your account." There's, you can set water volume limits in the event of a drought or otherwise, per day, week, or month. And then there's some mobile features that come along with that too. Do you guys have any questions so far?
I know. I think what you're saying, Kim, like I said, is 100% what we're looking for. It's just that we have to do some more homework on our side. I guess I would have one question is that, given that we're not happy with the system, like our total bulk system, not, not the, and you were to put this system on that one, what would it take to change it over to a newer system, a new updated system?
Which may be at a different geographic location.
Correct.
Yeah, so we're just the access system. You guys will already have your, like, we're not providing you the pumps, et cetera, or any of the outfielding or anything like that. We're just the access system, so that wouldn't be a problem.
Okay, but it wouldn't be a great, you know, like, let's just whatever the cost would be on the current system, and then we get our new system in a different location, would be a great, our question is, would it be a great expense to take the system that's installed and put it on a media wire?
Oh, no, no, absolutely not. I see what you're saying. Sorry, I misunderstood.
Okay.
So, in fact, our system works in tandem with any other system. So if you chose to go ahead and purchase it now and throw it up at your coin op to get people used to it, you could do that. Keep your coin op as well. I know some, some older users don't like the new age stuff anyways, but most people give about a month's notice and then take their coin op down, but that's not the situation you guys are in. It's very easy to move.
Sure. Kim, I think Darryl was curious as to what kind of cost that would be to us.
Oh, well, it's basically an hour of an electrician's time.
Electrician. Yeah, electrician.
Yeah, it, it takes, you know, 30 minutes to an hour to install. It's nothing confusing. There's just a few wires.
Okay.
Um, how is your guys' cell reception there?
Fine, it's adequate.
It's pretty good, yeah.
Okay. We do have an extended range option, but if your cell reception's good, there would be no need for that. And then, once you had, I guess, with your existing system, how is your flow rate? Is it consistent?
No, it's awful. That's part of the reason for a new location and a new, a new bulk filler. Flow rate's atrocious as is, which is, which is a big part of the problem.
Okay, so do you have a flow meter?
It's really, it's pretty good.
Yeah. I don't, I don't know exactly if it's a flow meter, if it's just a time system. Okay.
Yeah, yeah. And it, and it's, it's, I don't know. Would it be a two-inch?
Uh...
I think probably, probably.
It's either two, I want to say, I want to say two.
I'm going to say it's probably a two-inch, so, so I mean, it takes forever for these guys to.
Actually fill it in there.
To fill it up. And then they're paying with loonies. So like I say, you know, what you're offering is great. I guess, I guess we have to do some homework on our side and decide what we want. And I guess the biggest question is, is that, you know, give us, give us a price, maybe what it would, to put it in on this system, and a price to move it to a new location, is what I'd be looking for.
Yes, well, the, the only price associated with moving it is getting your electrician to uninstall and reinstall. There's nothing on our end, so that would just be on your end. But I absolutely can share the cost of the system with you, so we're all eyes open here. It is half of any other proper system, fob system, you're going to find out there, which would be ballpark 12,000 to $14,000. Ours is, so you pay $6,000 for the hardware, which is the, the fob module itself. And then, depending on how many fobs you guys needed, I just wrote down for numbers sake here 200, because I saw a huge variance of numbers in our notes here, 200 to 500, so I wasn't sure. And they are 15, $1.5 a piece. And then there is a $600 annual service fee. You pay for it just like you would a cellphone. So your, your first year hit, based on 200 fobs, would be $9,600. And then the second year, it's just $600. That makes sense. So basically, if I could just quickly explain what most RMs and municipalities do, is I'll round that up, so your, your upfront cost is $10,000 same. And let's say you do have 200 users. You divide that up, it's pretty simple. It's $50 a user. And what most places do is charge a one-time access fee. So yeah, we're upgrading our system, and instead of, you know, increasing taxes or however paying, making people pay for it that aren't using it, the people who are paying for it will be the ones who are using it. So each person pays 50 bucks, and we've heard some feedback that we shouldn't tell people to charge for the fobs because they don't like that. So you're just charging for the access, and then they get the fobs for free, is another way of putting it, and your system has been paid for. So it does come out of the budget in a sense, but it's being put right back in there.
Okay, I think that answers our question. Eric, Cory, you have another question?
Yeah, so I mean, given that you are routing everything through, through an online server, and given that, I'm sure you've had to deal with this with other municipalities, we obviously have some very reasonable, yet real expectations under Foyt and under legislation to ensure we're protecting user privacy, and you are logging user information. Where are your servers located? Are they in Canada? And if they are not in Canada, how will we assure that they're not subject to the Patriot Act or any other US legislation?
That's a very technical question. I wish Vince was here for that one. I do know our servers are with IBM.
So IBM, their servers are mostly in, in US-controlled territories, and would be subject to disclosure to foreign governments, i.e. in this case, the US, which would then make the Town of Thorbsby in breach of our responsibilities under Foyt if such requests ever presented?
Okay, yeah, I, I'm going to have to pass that one on to the smarter people in the building. I don't actually have an answer for you on that one, unfortunately.
I'm shocked you've never got it before, to be honest.
Pardon me?
I'm shocked you've never got that one before, to be honest.
Um, no, not a lot about privacy. I mean, Vince, Vince is the owner here, and the, the deeper questions usually come after the council meeting. They don't usually pop up in them. So I appreciate the wisdom, actually, and it's, no, I'm always hoping to learn more about our system operations here, so that's good. I will find out an answer for you. And yeah, it's, it's dudada Vince couldn't be here today. He's, he's on his first vacation in two years, so he's pretty excited. But I will definitely get you an answer on that.
I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, we will, we'll accept this for information there, Kim, and we'll get back to you on that. And if you can find that information, and as you say, we've got to do a little bit of homework on our side. At least, I think we now have a ballpark, and we can even look at possible grants or something, and budgets. There's a lot more involved in it, so I thank you for your time.
You betcha. That sounds really good. Yes, thank you guys as well. We'll talk to you soon.
All right. Thank you. Bye. All right.
Did they pursue us, or did we pursue them for information?
They have, they prior previously presented yourself.
Let's get a motion to accept that for information. I'll make motion to accept that for information. All in favor? Carrie, yeah, I mean, what, what they're offering is, it's great, but I, it's not great. No sense putting it on a wall swear.
Wall swears are expensive. What are you talking about?
No, just putting out a view of it. All right, 3.3, are you going to, going to?
Phone them right now?
Yep. So this is Maria and David, Maria Vaya and David Laplace. And they already have a development permit, so they're in home. And noticed the residential development incentives, and their construction. I don't know what, but I think they should have a building permit to be able to begin construction.
So we're just going to ask them, they're just going to ask for the plan, and then we'll hang up on them, and then they'll move.
That's correct. And it's only for the lots that the house is being built on.
Yeah, I guess that's part of my question. Are they, are they trying to amalgamate the three lots? Or just, they're only, they're buying three lots that they're building on lots?
Yeah, lots.
Yeah, there's like, that's the lot they're building on.
Hello?
Hi, Maria. It's Donna Tona, InterCEO from the Town of Thorbsby. How are you?
Good. Hey, Donna, how are you?
Good, 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 Maria. So you're live in front of council, and Maria, as protocol dictates, I will introduce you to Mayor Darryl Houston, and he will take over from here, Maria. Thank you.
Sure, thank you, sir.
How are you today?
Good, and you?
Good, good. So we're sitting here with the rest of council here, and we're looking at your application for the tax incentive. And just, can you just, I guess, basically, just tell me that, that what you're requesting there?
I'm questioning the, the, what the incentive that you are advertising for the city.
We've got all the paperwork on it, and we're just, I guess, Donna, do you want to say anything else? Like, I mean, she's put it in here now. We have it. As long as you know, you know, it's just for the incentive is just for the one lot where the house is on?
That's right, just for the lot.
Yep, and then we will.
And, yeah, that one, yeah, that one first, and the taxation that we, it was applied to us for the value, it was applying for the, like, a 50 acre, just in the corner of our lot. And they were charging like $3,000 a year. We were paying $1,100 for 0.12 acreage. It's the taxation, it was not making sense. Even he's in a, in your town, it's a vacant lot, and it was not like, it doesn't make no sense, the calculation, how they were, like, the value of the land that they give them, it's not the same as what we were priced for.
So Maria, just to be clear, tonight we're talking about your tax incentive for your new home, because you're building, but you're also talking about, what I'm hearing you say, is you would like tax relief for the other two lots. Am I hearing you right?
Yes, because the other lot, one, it's for sale now in Thorbsby, in Thorbsby City, and it's like $315,000 cost of it, which he valued only for $86,000. And he's paying $3,000 a year. Well, for 50 acres, we are paying $1,100 for 0.12 acreage.
And Maria, did you talk to the assessor? Did you talk to Grant?
No, I did not. I did not talk to him about that.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, all right. So if I could, I, I'm fairly sure I know which, which area you're talking about there. The discrepancy is that the area that you're talking about, with a, with a more generous, we'll say, taxation rate, is actually annexed farmland, and so we actually have a lot less control. It's not zoned the same. So essentially, what you're talking about is a zoning issue, and there's a very limited loophole whereby that 50 acres gets zoned at that very preferential Leduc County rate. That is not a real tax rate that is based on anything that's occurring in Thorbsby. It's an anomaly of annexation.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we're just dealing with your lots, your three lots here.
Okay, yeah, sure.
So the other, the other part, that's Cory, that was Cory, Cory alerted one of our counselors just for your information there. But we will deal with, we're going to, we're going to vote on the, on the.
The lot that is under contraction.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Cory, you have another thing?
Yeah, so I guess I just, I just wanted to confirm here which lot we're talking about.
It's the 48th, 48th, it's a Peter Deb.
Yes, the paperwork we have in front of us is saying Lot 19 is where we're applying for the tax incentive. But then administration implied that Lot 21 is where the, where the construction will take place. So I just wanted to clarify, is construction occurring on Lot 19 or Lot 21?
No, 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 just Lot 19.
Lot 19, okay. Perfect. Yeah, I just, yeah, I just wanted to clarify.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, well, I'm glad we clarified all that, so we know exactly what you're looking for now. Do you have any other questions? We're just going to.
No, no, that's the only one for us now, and as soon as we start building on a lot number 20, we'll let you know.
All right. Thank you very much, Cory.
I would move that so long as titles and other requirements in line with the policy are met in a manner satisfactory to administration, that the residential tax incentive policy be awarded to, sorry, can't remember who it is.
Maria.
Maria, sorry, yeah. Ms. Maria and Mr. Laplace, as per the existing policy.
All right, thank you. All in favor? That's great. So Maria, your, your request has been granted for the lot.
Okay, thank you so much. Thanks for your concern and your, thanks for your help, and have a good evening.
Okay, you too. Thank you. So, sorry, talk, you ordered this 50 acres.
You touched. It's annexed agricultural land. It's, that's taxed based on the Leduc County rate.
And that's 50 acres?
Sure, I'll take her word for it.
I don't know.
It's a sizable portion of land, but it's taxed in the Leduc County agricultural rate. That's not, that's not a viable comparison.
Yeah.
No, no, she's just saying that she knew that that's what he paid, right? So that's a, that's a misvalued comparison, because it's zoning issue.
I figure it were 50 acres.
Thanks for that.
Bingo lot.
Thank you, appreciate that. Sorry about that, council, I know it was.
And 21 is the one behind.
Yeah, I already knew what she was talking about, because I didn't show.
Yeah, that makes sense. Yes, we annexed that land, but it's never changed for agricultural use, so therefore it's still charged at their agricultural rate.
And then 21 is beside Sharon. And the 19, 20 are beside. Yeah, so the house will be built next to Mackenzie. About 19.
All right, so thank you very much for that. 3.4 Delagio's Restaurant, for the same thing. So we're going to.
We're going to get sit on the phone.
Sit on the phone.
Sit on the phone, yeah. Can't get away from the kitchen. This is a little different. You want to show your business in any way.
What, hey?
Hello?
Hi, Sid, from the Town of Thorbsby. How are you, Sid?
Good, good. How are you?
This, this protocol dictates now that, of course, the meeting over to Mayor Houston. So Sid, Mayor Houston will take, take the meeting.
I said, "How are you today?"
Good, good. How are you?
Well, I'm sitting here with the other counselors, Cory, Shelley, Tracy, and John. And we've seen your, your request for your tax incentive as per the, of the policy. And I don't believe we have any questions. Does anybody have any? Cory has one question.
I guess I, I realize there's been some talking forth there a little bit with this property. When did you take over this business?
We took over in April, mid of April.
So it is, it is fairly recent. And when did, when did? Fire, because part of this policy is that you need to be the registered owner of it, and I know that hasn't necessarily been the case with some of the previous proprietors of the, of the facility, so to speak. Are, are you in fact the registered owner of the building?
We are the owners of the building, yeah, and the business.
And that's.
That was your question, because it's truly echoing. I can barely understand what you're saying. But if you're asking if we are the owners of the property, the building, and the business, yes, we are.
All right, and that's something that Donna will verify anyhow, so. Hey, do you have any questions for Sid?
We have, we're, we are.
Okay, perfect.
Okay. All right, do you have any questions at all, Sid? I think you've been talking. Alright, do you have any questions at all Sid, uh, I think you've been talking with Donna. Okay.
If you guys, if we're done with this, I, I was telling Donna, I was planning to send you something guys, but I said, no, let them decide first, so they don't consider, as a guide then I send you something, guys.
Alright, well, we're gonna take a vote on this right now, so, uh, can I have a motion to, uh, to, uh, for the, uh, incentive be applied to Demagio's Restaurant? As per all the regulations on the policy.
I can make a motion.
Sorry?
I can make a motion for council to, um, decide whether they'd like to accept this incentive in regard to, um, say the Hammond, Demagio Restaurant as per, um, that has been given by administration.
That's carried Sid, that's simple, we're done.
Alright, thank you very much.
Alright, you have a good night.
Good night, thank you, good night.
I see that all the time. People keep talking. So how, I have a question, just curiosity, just because of that email is sent earlier today, how far back can, uh, business go on, on this? Do we have a time?
The policy doesn't give me any timeline.
Well, no, and I guess that, that was the root of my question, it's, okay, fine, April is current and recent, if it was eighteen months ago or something, well, it's no longer new, right, so I guess that's, that is why I was asking, because, yeah, I, I agree, there's a weird ambiguity there. It's almost a judgment call at a certain point of what's new. Because my day is, if we're in the same calendar year, surely we can all agree it's new, start going beyond that or we have to start debating where we're at.
Yeah, because there's no definition of new.
I, I agree, it's one of the problems with this policy.
I almost think that you have to go from the date of the bylaw, like from two thousand twelve, I mean. I hope not too, but, you know, that's what it was put in place.
It also does, the one caveat, though, it is explicitly at the discretion of council, so whereas council's discretion on new. And that's a bad way of doing things, and I, I think we all are on the same page, we need to, if we can.
And if the council never had any discretion, because it wasn't presented to council.
We're, uh, that's the, uh, argument.
And that's what we're doing.
Where we excited to be counselled, uh.
But would any, sorry, would any consideration be given to past requests? Uh, it's presuming that you're referring to words, that, um, it was presented to say but never brought further and.
Well, we've researched that, if I may, and we have a proposal for that. Um, we know that it was never brought forward, we did that research, it was never brought forward, so what Cindy and I have discussed informally is that instead of a tax incentive, we look at when it was proposed in twenty nineteen and we look at a, there's a rebate for three years instead of a tax, so the twenty nineteen, twenty, whatever that is, if it was two years, we provide rebate. It's easier. Otherwise, do we go back from twenty nineteen all the way forward, do we start from today? Um, it would be easier for, it'd be easier for a rebate than rather trying to figure out if we wanna give that tax incentive for twenty nineteen, twenty, twenty? And, and, or we just calculate differently.
Yeah, no, I appreciate, yeah, I appreciate if there's some sort of consideration, because he is a valued business owner.
But we found the, uh, we found that the document, um, ignoring it, of that, yeah, let me see it.
Like backup statement that.
Maybe just ignored it.
Well, like I said, we, uh, everybody's got some homework to do with that, sooner we get that done, better we clarify in this stuff.
Yeah, we, uh, we're looking for the council comments at the call in August, so we present it at the end of August.
Okay, no, as long as it's not been brushed under the rug, yeah, and so then.
Never.
Question I have then on that front is, um, are you gonna reach out to him or what?
I can talk to him.
Do you, should he reapply?
I, I don't know if he needs to reapply, I want to wait till Cindy gets back, then we'll probably talk with him.
The numbers, right?
And then we'll bring the numbers to you to, to see if that's what you agree, because you still have to bring the numbers to you, it's not a number two thing we can do, but we can present a couple of proposals. Um, it needs to be fair.
Well, and on top of that, they had done a huge runoff too, right?
Yeah, hundred percent, yeah, we, we've already rectified a few things with vehicle parking with them and all those kinds of things, so. We're, we're very fair administration. But, uh, uh, we wanna bring this to council end of August, regular council, and now, uh, have it done, so. Getting your feedback will be awesome, so we can appropriate that.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Uh, three point five, communities and loom delegation for the tree planting plan, is that you Carol?
Hi, it's me.
Excellent, over there.
Oh, we need a word, administration, um, Jerry and I have the privilege of shopping for fruit trees and bushes and all our vegetables that were pretty expensive bunches. So we received a grant through our mental, real mental health and, um, we partnered with Corvus and we received this fifty thousand, well, we received twenty five thousand, and part of it was for edibles. So, um, there's a, I would say more of two acres parcel, but I put three as three, but I think it's more than two acres. Uh, on the south side of the lion's park, in a certain location, for such an orchard called Thorsberry Grove, I just love that name, anyway, I hope you do too. There's a natural indentation with brush and the trees surrounding a grassy plot of glen. Fruit trees such as apple plum, apricot and cherry is tried in this well protected area. Also, ranchers, blueberries, apples, pomeas, pomeas, bushes could be planted along with tree line besides wildflowers. These edibles would encourage our family to take a walk and enjoy the fruits. It's a place where the community can come and have picnic, tables and benches will be placed there for those that would like to relax and enjoy the edibles. Community symbol in the wall of the town, where they can join together to plant the trees and bushes, maintain the edibles and mow the grass. And I would recommend that an M O U has written outlining the commitment of whole party. And there's a map there, uh, showing you where, uh, it is. Up at the top, before you go down to the lion's park, it's just a nice old grove.
I assume in the dark area is supposed to be it?
Yes.
Spray on the way.
Yeah, and, and it's, there's, it's a nice, uh, tree area, so it would be great to protect the, uh, I mean, you would have to cover the trunks, but protect them from the air as well.
So, um, right now this land is just being cut for grass?
Yes.
There's nothing left, really.
The land was acquired during previous term of council for the purposes of considering future expansion of the campground, given that there's a significant elevation difference, which costs huge amounts of money, as we discussed with the pump outs of the, the, uh, dump station and all the rest. Providing a new dump station and or service lots at the higher elevation that is immediately adjacent to the campground is far more economically viable than trying to service the lower area, given the elevation difference. That was the purpose of it, this conversation has came up before and the discussion has always been during previous engagements with council that it can be discussed, but needs to be incorporated with a plan for the entire area, not a single one of it, it's a large parcel land, surely more than one thing can fit, surely everyone can work together, but it does need to be part of a larger, more holistic discussion, not a one-off discussion.
So were you guys thinking, or was the thought process that the lower campground just be like tenting and then the upper would be?
Or would it be serviced sites where, again, there's easy access to, uh, water and sewer uh, without, again, needing lift stations or anything weird like that, there wouldn't be pump out cost because you don't need a holding tank, because it's drainage, drainage, you know, grading appropriately, that was the intention of acquiring said parcel.
So these trees, uh, Carol, like they, they cover, you say two point three acres? How many, how many trees are, like, with bushes, like you can't really see how many there is, I'm gonna say.
Um, how many is it, how many is that whole part there?
Not two point three acres.
So ten or fifteen trees right now, we've only spent about eight hundred dollars and we have, um, up to two thousand spent, so we can certainly find more trees, um.
I, I think Mr. Mayor and Council will help you out a little bit, I would explain to me if, they won't be planted in the center here.
Along the edges.
Along the edges of the tree.
Yeah.
So.
It's not really here.
That's, that's, that's my understanding.
Yeah, yeah.
And what, what, uh, what, uh, what timer, like, what's the timing on this, like, right away?
The trees are purchased.
They're purchased, but we can keep watering them in there until, um, when should we plant them there?
A S A P, somewhere.
So what's, what's everybody's wish, so Cory, what are you saying, are you saying that we shouldn't be putting these trees in?
That's the exact same conversation game before, we're gonna use a loop game, said we bought trees, you have no choice, we have to plant them there and we said, that's not viable because there's not a plan. Let's look at a different area that you can use in the interim and that wasn't really a well-received answer, but it was the answer that was, that was available. Uh, and now we're playing the exact same game again, as far as I'm concerned.
Well, we're planting them along the tree line, we're not, we're not planting in the middle of this plot, right?
I, I have no notion of where the tree line is, because it's an area that is intended for developments, maybe not today, maybe not next year, but at some point there is, there's supposed to be a plan developed for expansion, and I don't know where that tree line does or doesn't start, because I don't know what the development plan looks like.
And so where's the lion's thought process, because this would be a lion thing, right? And so what kind of timeframe are they looking at for this even to be a reality?
I don't know, but a tree orchard is supposed to be a long-term thing, not a twenty minute thing, you know, if, if we don't wanna plant a bunch of trees, wait for me fifty feet tall and then say, oh gee shucks, we shouldn't have planted them there, but we just didn't have a plan.
Yeah, Cory.
The outside by the road.
Yeah, I can put in my two cents, right? We went over this many, many times before, and that land is supposed to be, uh, for the lions, but they can't develop on that foot lane down below.
What do you mean, it's supposed to be the lion?
Well, for the campground, being.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do they have the money?
No, you can't, you can't put anything open that, they can't, uh, service lots down there, because it's on foot lane. So the idea was that it was a lot in exact space on that, on flat. And we, we, uh, we looked at putting trees in there, and we also looked at the vandalism. Okay, what's gonna happen around that, that route? I like the idea of, of, I've been in campgrounds down in the States where they have fruit trees and as they take them out, they open up lots, so that people can stay here. But none of us, none of us have saved, you know, I have a service lot, it's up on the top and, and that would eliminate that stupid, uh, flushing system down in the valley and they'd be able to go around the, the, uh, the, the other building. I could take my trailer around there, thirty seven, that thirty seven footer and, and dump it, that would be easy to do. But I don't think, I don't think this, this whole willy-nilly, we looked at that, that space being in Madison on the north side, alongside the, the canal, or whatever you wanna call it, and that's a perfect spot. And people in, in the buildings can look out and see those trees and if there's any vandalism, you know, people going in and, and doing, it, it's kind of protected, it's in the open. And, no.
Well, I'd say, none, none of this council, according to what the lion's plans, but we'll, like, obviously, you know, look at this more, what did you have to put into this?
I just have some concerns about fruit trees in our climate. As in the maintenance of fruit trees as well.
We, we check into all that.
Fruit trees require like loss of pruning, care, which means more time, and things like apricot, plum, cherries don't really do well here.
We bought the ones that are in our zone, like when we went by and we, she, she, uh, uh, taught us about the different zones, and so we only picked up the fruit trees that would grow in our zone. So, and, and she, you know, we know about fertilizing, we know about pruning, we know about all that. I've done a little bit of course, because I'm a little pissed off on that.
Yeah, yeah. We just didn't discuss them.
Yes.
Alright, well, it seems to me, go ahead Donna.
If I can have counsel clarify for me a little bit, just so I know. May not phrase this right, I'm just gonna ask, because maybe former counselor, Iver can answer the question. Or maybe counselor Gilbert, was that land on top, has it been rezoned for recreation, has it, was there, was there, uh, change of land use file, was there, uh, was there a public hearing, like?
As far as I know, it was and is still zoned as park.
Right, that's what I'm reading, yeah.
The process was started and then there was an election. So no, there has not been full public consultations, because there has been an election in between, and this council hasn't addressed.
Okay, I'm just seeking to understand, because I don't have any notes, right, on it.
Yeah, it was, it was acquired with the explicit intention of facilitating a, not having a pump out, you know, dump station, as well as potential service, uh, RV lots, whether it be the lion, the town or someone else providing a, an viable option that didn't require a lift station. And that's where it was left.
And, and seeking to understand again, was there, um, and I'm looking up, because I'm thinking as I'm talking, I'm trying to answer a question. Was there any kind of studies done on, on the lift, um, the pump out station, like a RV pump out station is what you're talking about, basically, right?
Yeah, just a dump station.
Yeah, that's right, a dump station, so was there any, um, testing, any kind of, uh, any kind of study or anything about putting a, a pumping, or dumping station up there?
Yeah, you don't need a pump station right there.
I mean dumping station, I mean a RV dumping.
And geodetic elevation between the existing line to the lift station and the, the grade of the lot was considered and discussed both with public works as well as with, with select engineer, yes, there's, there's adequate geodetic elevation difference to accommodate a gravity drain system.
Okay, yeah, no, that's good.
My question is, does the lion's club have a plant or have money to finance it to, to even put together a plant, like how, is it gonna be a twenty year project, when are they gonna actually, you know, be able to do that?
Yeah, it, it seems to me this whole thing needs a little bit more, uh, looking into, we just can't make a decision on this right now, I don't think, because I'm hearing a whole bunch of different things and nobody really has the definite answers on it, like whether the studies are done or whatever, right? So I think we need to do a little bit more information and bring it back.
But we do need a place to plant.
Yeah, no, and, and possibly in the meantime, maybe you could look at something, but, uh, I think that Donna C E O needs to maybe give the administration, uh, direction to look into this a little bit more and, uh,
that would be awesome, Mr. Mayor, I would much appreciate it, I, I didn't realize there's a lot of background business, so I do wanna make sure things clarified.
Yeah, Shelley, do you have questions?
I have a question, so also in this presentation, it says tables and benches will be placed there for those who would like to relax and enjoy the edibles. Is this included in the grant or?
Actually, the healthy community is, um, is the grant for the, uh, table chair, so. But there are two different grants, so they cover two different things.
So I, I can say, I say again, I think we need to look more into this, I would.
I would suggest that what you need to do is consult harvest, somebody who knows it. I only know of one successful, uh, apricot tree in, in the middle of, in the city of Edith. And it, it depends on a lot of things, okay, if you get, the blossoms come early and you get a high wind, or you get a frost, you blossom, and it's, and this person, I know them, and they've only had a successful harvest maybe when I knew them, once in ten years. Now, one of the comments here, who's gonna look after this? Have you ever, anybody here ever tried to grow apple trees?
Yeah.
Yeah, you have to really spend a lot of time on it, right? Okay, and, and pear trees, forget it. Let's, let's look, if you want fruit trees, put apples in, what else are you gonna grow?
Well, we have a cherry orchard not too far away from us.
Yes, yes, I, I agree with you.
Yeah.
Evan's cherry, absolutely, we've got two in our yard, haven't moved yet.
Yeah.
Well, like, like I'm saying, I'm, I'm, I think that, I'm, I'm hearing lots of different sides on it already and I think we need to come up with a little bit of a better plan and check it out.
Remember that? Sorry, that piece of property was meant to be, uh, uh, the area that the, it's the expanded campground and be able to put in full service lots and have a lift station up there, get rid of that one in the valley.
Well, once again, i- if that's the case, then we need a plan for that, I mean, we don't have anything.
Sure, but you start finding a tree orchard and now you can't have a plan because it's already, it's already absorbed.
My point, we need to bring this back and get some more information on both sides, I think, because we can't make a decision on something that we don't know anything about either way. So I, yeah, go ahead.
I'm curious about the name Thorsberry, is that gotten stolen, or where does this name come from, or?
It just sounds like, it's just something that popped up and, uh, I just haven't agreed. And it's spelled, uh, the A R Y berry, it's the E R R.
No, no, it's all, you know, nobody's, nobody's trying to take this the wrong way, but I think it's, in the, either way, either, either, even for, even with, sir, a campground, we need more information on that too, we just can't make decisions on it, based on the information that we have. So, um, I think that, uh, we'll just go ahead and say it, Donna.
Just a quick question to the delegation, um, Carol, if this doesn't get settled before winter, do you have a place for trees?
No, we don't. Like, they don't get settled.
What I don't understand is, why can't it be on the outside of?
Perimeter.
Yeah, why can't it be on the perimeter? Like, I don't understand, that's not gonna interfere with anything.
See, but a campsite, yeah, back to the moron, it's parked right up onto it.
Why can't it be along the road even?
Why can't it be done by where our signs go on, it's a green spot there.
Or what?
Our signs go on, green spot there.
Or there's a giant green space right in along the drainage now, like I was.
Yeah, but nobody walks, we wanted an, and an area where people will actually walk and enjoy. That's behind our houses and nobody walks down there.
We have to have a protected area, it has to, because like our windows are too cold, we have to have it within a closed area. That's the secret, that's why that spot place was so perfect.
Well, if you guys can do some more research on that. And then I'll get to, to, to do a little bit more on it, because I, I just don't see an explanation there to make a decision on this, so. So be it, please, uh, Mr. Mayor, we would appreciate it. Do we just accept that information? Uh, no, there, I just believe. Can I have a motion to direct the administration to pursue this further, to look into uh possible other locations? And also use of, possible use of this land?
I can make that motion.
Your favor?
Tracy.
Tracy, sorry.
Like, I mean, it's just, we could have an empty spot sitting there for twenty or thirty years.
Do you have another thing that you want to?
Lots of empty spots.
Yeah, we need to actively do. Go through the process of.
Yeah, and that's my point, that's, that's what I'm asking.
I, like I say, I don't want, if they go first, you know, where I want to come up with a plan, which will be several years from such action.
All right, so uh. Thank you, Tracy. Uh, three point six, Federation of Canadian Municipalities decision and uh. I'll let you, it's associated on, I think I was. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, so during the May twenty fourth, a regular council meeting, we opted to table the discussion. Of the FCM membership for the twenty twenty three budget. And the administration is asking tonight to renew this, renew this discussion prior to the twenty twenty three budget. Here's the background, the Federation of Canadian Municipalities uh program since I'm United Communities, drive federal investment in infrastructure, housing, transit, and more. Uh, the federal government is releasing a ton of money for infrastructure. And uh, to some grants uh, to the two hundred and ten million. And uh, with a grant and then they, they do it two ways, you can have a full grant out of FCM for infrastructure. I think the federal government is two point, two point four one billion, I think they're releasing. So uh, FCM has two, uh, two ways, you can have a full grant, depending on how much that is, up to I think two million. Where you go up to ten million, you can have a grant to offset most of that ten million with a low interest loan through FCM. The thing that uh, I've been called about, the person that's going to answer that question isn't in until Thursday, but I want to make sure. That uh, let's just say, for example, if we, we qualified for the ten million for infrastructure. The grant covered, let's say, seven, we borrowed three from them, does that, does that impact our borrowing levels here for municipalities? I don't have that answer yet and I have a question. The, the issue is though, irregardless of that, they have a lot of big grants for things, including potentially our water waste water study. So um, what we have to do, and what I'm recommending we do is un, uh, is um. We resurrect the motion to rise from the table, the motion uh for the FCM. And then administration is asking counsel to consider paying membership fees so we can access those federal grants.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions on that? Like uh, basically, if we don't, if we don't put this back on the table and uh, pay the money, we can't get any grants from these people. That is correct, that's all I need to say. So can I get a motion to raise from the table, a motion that I made the twenty fourth? On your agenda, three twenty two?
Uh, says due date was oh four oh one twenty twenty two.
Yeah, it's just.
Is there fees or?
No, nothing, no, they've been, they've been in contact, they just want to know why we're, we've been a member for twenty two years. And they're actually just asking us why we're not a member anymore, so.
There's a reason for not being a member?
No, there's no uh, there's no interest, there's no penalty, there's no anything like that.
What was the reason for not doing it or is that?
We just, we were just trying to say.
Like, there is no tangible benefit at the moment. And the federal government does often route grant programs through them, so if there's a new, a new string of grant programs, yes, it does often get routed through them. So now there's a tangible benefit, so it doesn't justify the cost savings if there's any possibility of accessing that funds.
Let me just release those uh, budget monies, I think uh.
Yeah.
First, we, we just didn't think there was anything out there, but now we can see there is, so how there is. So. So if anybody would like to make that motion.
I mean, making motion to rise. That, uh, motion, motion to rise from the table that Councilor Gilbert made on May twenty fourth of twenty twenty two, that one?
Yeah, the right one, yeah, that's correct. Thank you. All favor? That is carried. And then we can discuss a new motion to pay that invoice. So can I get a motion to pay the amount of three fifty eight oh nine to FCM?
I can make that motion. Do you want me to elaborate and repeat that? I can, yes, oh, thank you.
All favor? And that is carried, thank you. All right. Three point seven, skate park concrete pad.
So, Mr. Mayor, counsel, we know this is controversial, we know that, and we know, we were not being contrarian to any of this. Um, we know that the uh tennis court was paid for the purpose of skateboard parks. We know that it's asphalt. We've got, we've got some studies from skateboard parks, because this is a modular skate park, so we went looking for. Four studies that, that we could quote to talk about um asphalt versus cement and of course, they all recommend cement only because of. Of uh, this is not road. You know, stuff the same kind of asphalt as road asphalt and it, it's in a smaller sphere and it's subject to, to marks and wheels. We're just presenting this back tonight uh, as we see them. Um, we have looked at concrete pads and uh, we believe that needs to be a uh twenty by fifty. Um, pad based on the skateboard park and it, the price for that is around fifteen thousand, we've caught quite a few cement companies. And that includes putting it on a flat surface, forming it, etc. So, we're relocked in, we have to, I will, I will say this and, and um, this program can certainly chime in if she needs to, she's the rent manager. I'd certainly be appreciative of that if she feels the need to. Um, we worry about the ruts in the asphalt, we worry about losing the tennis court, potential pickleball. Um, I'm not saying they're playing on it now, I understand that, um. But we're just getting started with programming and that this year too, so it's kind of first year back in operation. We worry about uh the fence, I mean, some child comes off a, a jump or something, even though it's a modular, even though it's probably lower. And, and cratering into the fence. Um, we believe that the skateboard park and the tennis court should be able to operate in harmony, probably in the same location around the, the red center. If we find a space that isn't swamped when it rains hard, because that isn't so much fun either. Um, the modular system that we've bought a lot of communities, um, they're, they're broke down within three to five years because of the heavy. Heavy use of them, and, and again, that's just regular use, which we can't help that, so that's just, that's just some information. So, I guess um. We're saying here that we recommend this our different formation, but actually it's a regular meeting council and we've kind of changed our mind over time. We, we can't be silly around this anymore, either put it in tennis court or we build a path, it's just one or the other. Um, we're not desirous of a tennis court, we will put that out, but we will take counsel's recommendations into consideration. Kelly, your first.
Okay, I know I brought this up the last time and I don't recall what the answer was, so maybe Kelly or you, Donna, could refresh my memory.
Sure.
Why will we not put it into the ice rink area because it's too thin?
Because the concrete is too thin, too thick, it's challenging that.
We used to have holes in there.
Yeah.
Just saying, we literally used to have livestock in there, just saying.
That floor is so aggressive, I would not take any chance with it.
But yet it holds holes with.
Is it a new floor or has that floor been in there twenty years? I don't know.
Um, I don't know. I don't know.
It's not like it's five years old or?
I've never been around when there was holes in there. We're cautious with vehicles, like if we bring vehicles in there, we don't let them sit in there, like we just have rodeo in there.
Literally used to have rodeo, yeah.
Many years ago, I mean, I know we had.
Justin, Justin, put it up. I think for only two months, Austin Board gets called number, well, it's down anyways. Put it up, use it, we can discuss putting a pad next to the budget in a better location if that's the issue, but we can see this year if the asphalt. Take a view, see if there's complaints or people on the tennis court, and get them to give information to back up why we're moving it or why we're leaving it there.
If it's portable, it can be set up and taken down if it's going to be an issue.
So where are you suggesting put it?
In the, where the pad was paid, put it there in the.
On the tennis court, yes.
And so I, I don't like this idea, but the racquetball court isn't a reality because it's just too small, right? I don't know the size of these equipment.
This gets, gets.
Yeah, it's way too.
So how long, how long would it take public works to set that up?
Eight hours.
Eight hours.
Eight hours?
Correct, two minutes.
And then that thing is lockable right now, um, would we need? Would we need everybody to sign a waiver or anything like that?
Nope.
Reliable, doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter, again.
Every skate park I've ever been to, which is very numerous, there's a placard out front that says, you know, use it your discretion, wear a helmet, wear pads, don't do anything stupid, essentially.
And they're not locked up.
And, and most aren't locked up, the city of Ladue has no problem leaving there wide open with nothing. City of, or the town of Calamar, has there's a round, it's fenced in, but there's actually no way of locking the fence, there's no gate on the fence. And there's just on an asphalt pad that's been there for thirty years and there's no rush, just, just, so we're all.
Kelly, do you have a question or?
Um, I have my question, and a lot of the problem is there's a lot of information on it, so I've been back and forth with the company, sent an email, trying to get information. And their recommendation is that we anchor it down, like, because it's portable and people can pick up and walk out with it. I don't know if that's going to happen or not, I honestly, I don't know. You never know in any community if that, but I only seen pictures of it when it was set up in the asphalt court. I didn't actually have my own eyes on it. Um, and some of the pieces were small, like if the, if it was wide open, but then I don't think that we should, if we have it, we have it. Like, we shouldn't be blocking the tennis court every day.
So if, if we were to put it.
Climb over it, it's a fence and. We're in there.
You don't get to let people go, uh, like, I'm not saying I'm too surprised, but it would be locked, it would be open the same hours as a complex or what?
Twenty four seven.
Twenty four seven.
It's open, it's totally open.
Yeah, I think if you block it, there's much.
So we're just. But these are questions they're asking.
I do want to increase the problem.
It would be the same liability as playground equipment, I miss.
Essentially, yeah.
Yes, essentially.
But how do you prevent it from walking away? And maybe they search it, I don't even know, like, I mean.
Take the small piece, take the small pieces, but the hall that picks up there, it's going to take more than two guys picking it up and running with it.
And somebody else, somebody else.
Twelve year old kid isn't strong enough, if you're a grown adult, then fine, but why are grown adults stealing skate parks and we have cameras? That I don't.
I was going to ask, are there cameras?
We don't have cameras.
No, but there are.
In the park.
Residential, right across from where it's going to be.
We have one on from the library parking lot, we have one that catches part of the playground, we do not catch any of that area.
Motion that they promote on this?
I'll make a motion to build it on that pad as soon as possible.
And in the tennis court?
Yes, in the tennis court.
All right, all favor? We're not. Uh, three point eight, food bank fund. So. Basically, in this one here, um, we already voted for this here, I mean, there was uh, two payments, it would be five hundred dollars for. Year before, I believe, right, Donna, and then plus the current year, and we just didn't, we didn't follow through on it. Great, go ahead.
Saying we didn't follow through and pay it isn't a fair statement. When somebody requests a voluntary donation, you have the option of voluntarily paying it or not, it's not an invoice. A request for a donation.
No.
So saying we're behind on it is provocative, if you guys feel we have too much money in our bank account right now. And wish to make an extra ordinary donation, that's, that's the prerogative of council. I remember a very big tax increase because we're broke, so I don't feel that we have extra money, so I don't know why we're giving. An extra donation beyond what, what the normal ask is, and it is an ask, not an invoice, just.
So what you're arguing is, so to clarify. We should still do the twenty twenty one, which we have said we would, and the twenty twenty two, as we said we would, but as to this extra money.
Yes, the extra thing, yeah, let's go over and above and redonate to prior years where there was no money. And a year where we increased taxes because we have no money, that's not a fair statement, we're behind. No, we didn't have the money, so we didn't donate because that was the financial reality.
I think um, I think what we're saying here is the, the twenty twenty one, we need to pay the twenty. Twenty two, fifth amendment, let me think here. Let me counsel, Shelby, you're right. We're not asking for any extra.
Yeah, I think it's just the language wording.
Well, I said the wording makes it imply that it's a fire, you know, twenty twenty one was budgeted, twenty twenty two is budgeted. Both are budgeted expenses that do not need to come to council.
Right.
So if we're saying it's coming to council because we're behind, my answer is why are we doing that? The ones that were already budgeted, well, they're budgeted, it's an administrative discretion to then distribute out of the budget accordingly.
So the words in the executive summary of is looking to catch up can be easily removed.
Yes, I guess that's my problem is what, what are we stating here, because if we're saying let's go backdate things, especially in a tight budget, what, whoa. What are, what are we doing, what are we talking about?
Well, Cindy can probably clarify, she's done well tonight, so we didn't have a chance to uh, talk about this, but the, the one payment was not made. And then we, we decided to delay the, the twenty twenty two, so I think that's where the word catch up came from.
But in twenty twenty one, it was budgeted and should have been, it was an oversight that it didn't get.
That's right, that's always.
Twenty twenty two, it is budgeted and should, so by, at that point, they both were budgeted and they're just an administrative function of sending out a check at that point, so it doesn't actually need to come to council.
Understood, but because, no, it's not a concern.
I, and I just, that's why I'm confused.
Yeah, fair enough.
Yeah.
With, with, with the tightness of the money and it's the food bank, we're just being courteous.
Yeah.
Fair enough, I just like to say, I want to make sure I understand what we're agreeing to here.
I already did.
Thousand dollars.
Yeah, so and then what, administration, okay, for something, and expend, so is this another a thousand dollars?
No, no, no.
Oh, see, I was confused.
That's my point, is it something additional or the money that was.
That was what we budgeted.
Okay.
I already had a question.
My red lifting, we discussed that and we did pay it. We paid.
It sounds like the money never actually made its way there between changes.
It was never paid, it was just an oversight.
Yes, it was in our budget for twenty twenty one, but they never actually, it never made its way through, so that's, yeah.
That's correct.
No extra money.
Yeah, and then the twenty twenty three will be coming.
In, in October.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, the request.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, 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 I, 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 I never realized that, I never took it that way.
Well, like I said, that's why I think, what are we talking about, is this all budgeted money or are we trying to add to, to the money?
No, no, we're not, no, we're not. Since it was more budgeted.
Because the fees were like twenty, thirty, ninety, you know.
I, I believe, I believe, uh, what was their, what was their comment, Gert, are we mad at her?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, I, I always.
Yeah, because Gert had contacted me and just.
And I think she's proven to us that, you know, that the usage of the food bank and the Thorsby area is a lot more than five hundred dollars.
And they need a lot of cooking here, they help, they help, they've given us the numbers and I, I, if memory serves me right, I think it took eleven thousand dollars to, to. Thorsby draws out.
Sure, I think, yeah, the money that we already allocated our budget, I find it interesting, the, the way it was worth, it made me very unsure as to how, how we're talking about.
Yeah, so uh, okay, so can I get a motion then, just as uh, to request just pay the budgeted amounts?
Yeah. I can make a motion for administration to. Make the budgeted amounts for twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two to the food bank um, for a total of one thousand dollars.
All favor? That is carried. Uh, three point nine, chamber commerce membership. Uh, see, Donna, I believe, or maybe, uh, maybe Tracy, you, you want to talk?
Well, I went to my first chamber meeting, so it's all new to me. And uh, one of the things that came up was that the expectation is that the town becomes a member of the chamber. Which I did kind of ask for more clarification on that, because I was worried you guys might ask for more clarification on that. And they assured me that uh, Ladue County and the city of Ladue is a member of like uh, the Ladue Chamber of Commerce. And it's just an expectation that we would be part of the Thorsby. And so as of right now, the membership fee is ninety dollars and come fall, they are going to be increasing that fee uh, by the end of September. So hopefully um, it's what we decide to do and otherwise the fee will be higher after September if we choose to wait.
Does that, when you, we become a member, do we get a voting? Do we get a vote of that or not?
Yep.
Okay, so then whoever you're, you're on the board.
Yeah.
So then you get a voting rate now and instead you don't have a vote then probably.
Depends on the, uh, your worship, it depends on the bylaws. Typically, council members don't get a vote. Um, they're on the board. The, the, the city or the town would get one vote when it comes to, uh, election time, because a member. It depends on what their new bylaws are going to state.
Well, it's just.
And the insurance and whatnot, I would.
I mean, the existing bylaws, being the person who wrote them once upon a time back in twenty-ten or whatever it was, chambers by default a member with a voting right on the board.
Oh, I see. There you go.
Or the town, yeah, the town is a member of the chamber with vote, a voting right regardless of the ninety dollars.
Oh, and I just say, but with the expectation of you pay the membership.
That was historically been known, but yes, the bylaws didn't explicitly state that the town shall pay to be a member. It was that they are a member with voting right on board regardless of what. Again, that, unless somebody's changed them in the ten years interview.
They're, they're working on it, you know.
Yeah, that's what I heard, so. Alright, uh, recommendation from administration is to council approve the membership fee of ninety dollars. If you want to make a motion to that effect?
I can make the motion to pay the fee of ninety dollars.
On favor? That's carried. Uh, three point one zero, Artic Spots Recreation Center, naming.
Thank you, worship. I'll turn this over to Miss Probie, as she's been dealing with, uh, Artic's dog, but we do have their signature on an agreement. And, uh, this property is all yours. So, further to the town meeting, when we, the issue is, so we have been back and forth with Artic Spots and just trying to speak some things, making sure we're on the same page. Um, nothing has really changed for, they've agreed to a graduated payment scheduled to, to last ten years, just pay eight years, eight thousand per year. We're committing to graduate, or so eight thousand, up to ten thousand over the next ten years. Um, they want to sponsor a building again, maintain the rights, which is actually fantastic and very exciting. Um, normally, um, we just updated the agreement with what we currently have for signage. We did attach the pictures of everything. So they've been, you know, had, I've been late to the last number of years that it wasn't actually included as part of the agreement. So it's just added to the agreement, so it's just clear and tight for everybody. Um, the Artic Spots employees, Artic Spots would like to take more of a lead in offering, um, the health wellness, I guess, for their, all of their staff. And so for the members that they determine qualify, uh, they will actually pay the bill directly to us, uh, for their membership at a fifty percent discount. So we're still working on the process of it, but probably the easiest, um, what Mark and I were back and forth about is, um, is, because right now we just kind of take a pay, we take a pay stub or something like that, put it in to get, and then it's a membership. Uh, what we would do is create a separate package within our, for our Artic Spots employees. They would have to bring a letter signed off by their administration stating that they qualify for this. So it's not, you know, they can determine the parameters around which tax they want to get it. And then at the end of each month, I can just run a quick report, send the invoice on a monthly basis, and maybe the bill.
So that it would pull, um, whoever has a membership so they can.
As the Artic Spots.
Yeah, okay, yeah. And they can choose to do it on a monthly basis or an annual basis, you know, whatever.
And that would be a single membership, not a, that we want to buy a family membership.
No, just separate. There's no difference. And if you are a family, and it's never been this bad. So, um, yeah, so Mark actually just came yesterday and he was quite excited and.
Yeah, I see they've already signed it.
Signed off on the agreement. And I'm like, oh my gosh, may I sample more? I will get this in front of council and hopefully sign off on by Mayor Austin.
I don't think there's anything new in here. Corey, go ahead.
Well, just one thing, given financial realities and budget constraints, and there has been increasing talk over the years, there's always been talk the years. Just that it is a long-term contract and it keeps alluding to GST shall be included. Perhaps some sort of a minor amendment saying that applicable taxes shall be considered in addition, given that the likelihood of a provincial tax or a harmonized sales tax or anything else over the next ten years could become a thing.
Sure, and I'm sure if we cross that, Tracy can.
Sure, I guess that's my point, it's a minor tweak, but it could be a eight percent hit or some, you know, something down the road, and it could be easy to address now.
Sure.
Oh, I think that's, you know, I mean, we're, we're lucky to have a good partner like that, and they seem pretty excited, and then they'll, they'll get some more. Well, you said, I mean, so I think, anybody have any other comments on? I think we just need a motion to, uh, for, to agree to sign an agreement, I guess. Would you like to make that motion?
I'd make the motion to get the agreement signed. Uh, move on to manufacturing is respawning the contracts, but a gradual increase over the next ten years.
Thank you. On favor? Carry on. Great, so Kelly, if you want me to sign that, I, I'll.
Yeah, I brought the original list, so we can have.
Okay, sure. Okay, uh, three point one oh one, river intake lease agreement payment.
Just for a time, council's information has been paid, uh, every year, which is funny, you know, this is the, uh, the one lease agreement on the road. That's the intake here. Two leases, this is coming due. Uh, this is when you first go through the first gate. Uh, this is their land. The second gate is separately. Uh, but this one is due, um, and it's, uh, five years from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-three, so we would have to look at, um, renewing in twenty twenty-three. Uh, the sum payment is, uh, twenty-six hundred dollars, and it's due, uh, it's due here in the July, thank you, and July third.
Three point four, is there, uh, you need a motion for us to approve it? Uh, it's already.
It's not going to approve, this is just the existing.
Yeah.
It's existing, we're just bringing to your attention. It's a motion for information.
We're going to separate.
Yep.
And we've budgeted for this, right?
Yeah, we've budgeted it in the lease.
Well, uh, if there's any city reports, city reports, correspondence, um, anybody in the gallery, uh, ask you any comments, any questions here, anyone?
Oh, she missed the, uh, council, council tracker. We have one. That's okay, Mr. Mayor.
So, uh, that's great. It all looks, we get in there. Is anybody have any question on the tracker?
These are what they're putting online. I guess.
Uh.
This is for our records of.
No, it's for your records, Council Miller. Yeah, it's a typical thing that administration provides to, to council, letting you know that, uh, uh, if we have an issue with a motion or it's not done, or we haven't done it, or, you know, uh, now that we've, uh, the one that's in, uh, uh, twenty twenty-two, you could see this shade of the table, that will be changed now. You take it off table and we go. So everything that, uh, council has motioned of to do is, uh, January fourth, twenty twenty-two, uh, in council meetings, as in, uh, previous meetings is.
So you go ahead.
Um, I just have one question. Um, I know that Cindy's not here tonight, and she had promised the variances. Did she get that to up on anybody here?
She just about got it done. She ran into some snags again. Uh, they will be in town.
I was ready.
If you want to show up on the tracker, you got to make an actual motion. You've never made a motion to that effect, which is why it's not on the tracker, which is why it hasn't been created. Next, if you want the variances, make a motion to provide direction for them to provide the variances, and then they'll show up on the tracker.
Yes. And to the other, in contact with the auditors, um, they'll be here for two days. They can do a lot of stuff remotely. She's asked for the report, but one company will be dedicated to regular, when they're done in September, to, to that, um, audit. We've asked that the report be in English, not in accounting, and that, uh, we need all of the data from last year to identify if we've been working on them or had some luck. Um, so that's all the, uh, all the.
Any other discussion, one discussion on the tracker?
Not that I don't want to, that's just for a wrap.
That's all. If we, uh, if it's a gallery, then I would entertain, if there is no in-camera name, so I think that motion's. Favor? Let me know when you're in the courts and I want to see a.
I can't do a back.
Uh, you can do it.
I'm holding it for him, and I don't bounce very well. Maybe on a snowboard still, but snow is softer.
You, I want to see.
Uh, no, true.
So the one email you sent, that you'd go up there.
I, I'll be, I'm not doing a stack, I don't want to double back.